Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order at six o'clock. We'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll do the roll call. Barker?
Here.
McCain?
Here.
Wertz?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Russ?
Here.
Hanfelder?
Here.
Trent? Griffin? Here. Okay, it's time for public comment.
Is it my turn?
Yes, go ahead Gerald.
Okay, thank you. This is the only thing always is the problem. Apologize for my voice. I'm under the weather. Okay. First, I would like to welcome the newest member of the board, Jill Griffin, and wish her well. Her solid background in education bodes well for our future. This faculty member appreciates your presence on the board. Now, I want the board and those here today to reflect with me on the following for the holiday season and for the coming year. So I ask you, what does Scrooge do the other 364 days? It is clear that the miser in Penny Pincher wakes up on Christmas Day, but only after having the Bee Jesus scared out of him. He wouldn't change without the pressure the three spirits visited upon him. Prior to this, he routinely terrorized people by being uncompromising about money owed and money paid. He worshipped money before all else. No one really wants to be around someone consumed by the desire for money. That's how Scrooge lost the one love of his life. We're not told how Scrooge fares on the 26th of December or after New Year and throughout the year after his experience with the spirits. We would like to think he was permanently changed, but what if he was not? He would revert to doing the same old miserly, callous, ungracious things he did prior to his overnight ordeal. At first, he might remember with clarity the message of the three spirits, but that clarity would fade as time went on, and with no return of the spirits to remind him, he would go about business as usual, offending people, extorting people, oppressing people with his money-first philosophy. The same people who were magnanimous toward him on Christmas Day would again despise him, the recidivist. Now, Lewis and Clark has had a Scrooge on his campus for about three to four years, and he has had a time with us, faculty, staff, and administrators. Who begrudges the salaries people make with no knowledge of what they do? Who begrudges the benefits employees receive with no compassion for their well-being? Who tells employees they are overpaid and reneges on a duly-signed employment contract because it "costs too much" in his opinion? Who begrudges a president the pittance it takes to travel out of state to advance the mission of the college? These are all actions of a Scrooge, one who fails to see the higher values of love and humanity in the work that people do. So I ask the board to reflect on this as we move to the new year and work so that such actions will not be repeated, and work so that the spirit of love and compassion for human beings guides our decisions. Our mission is to empower people, further their opportunities, and to show the way to success both academically and in careers. Sometimes, money must be spent to hire and retain excellent staff, administrators and faculty. Sometimes, money must be spent on programs, activities, and support networks. A community college is for the community it serves, not just for those Scrooges who miserly fret about their tax payments. If we see no return of the Scrooge, Lewis and Clark will be in a better place in the future. So I encourage you to work toward that end. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Okay, let's go on with the budget health update.
Sure, so I'll provide a few brief points here on budget. So tuition and fee revenue at this point in the semester is down just under $25,000 from this point last October. Overall revenues, however, do continue to trend up. We're about $400,000 revenue over expenses at this point. A lot of that has to attribute to perhaps grant indirect cost revenue from grants, as well as, you know, obviously doing a good job balancing our budget, but also, you know, encumbrance coming in and what we're kicking out in terms of paying bills. That's always sort of a tricky balance, but at this point, we do anticipate ending the year with a balanced budget once again, and I, of course, always want to commend the team for just being completely tuned into that process. We are seeing an increased cost in utilities, which is probably not unexpected from this year, from this time last year due to more utilization across campus. Contractual services have increased significantly in the month of October due to a delay in the custodial invoices in September, which resulted in paying two months of custodial services in October. And although other expenses are also trending upward for this year compared to last year, we are still seeing conscientious spending, as I've mentioned earlier, in all departments. So thank you, team, for that. And overall, again, we are projecting that our spending for FY '23 will be within our operating and approved budget for last year. So that concludes my update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll have the enrollment update with draft enrollment management.
Yeah, Tim. Thanks.
Good evening. I'll start with the numbers for spring enrollment. To date, there are currently 1,716 students enrolled for spring with 18,994 credit hours. Unfortunately, due to last year's cyber event, there are not available comparison numbers to this point last spring. But as every year, we expect a big push that first week of January, all the way up to the first day of the spring semester. So I'd like to thank in advance the whole enrollment team for their hard work, and hope they get a restful holiday break, because we'll be busy. As far as the enrollment management plan, you have all on the board seen this and given feedback, and I appreciate your feedback, and appreciate the feedback and support from the mover team. It's been a few months, and it's come along well. This plan is directly aligned with our key direction one, but it also aligns with the three others. And just like those key directions in our strategic plan, this enrollment management plan will be evaluated yearly and revised as trends change, new ideas are formed. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Are there any questions about the plan or enrollment at the moment?
What time period do you have, you know, like, no numbers? Do you have numbers starting January 1 or, you know, for last year?
I do not know when we... I could get that for you.
Yeah.
I do know... Well, no, I don't. I don't have that on me, but I could get you the final numbers, too, if you want.
I like your enrollment management plan, and it says, you know, year one, two, three. When does year one begin exactly in your mind? Is that January 1 or is that next fiscal year?
So ideally, it would align with the strategic plan, which is January, not January 1, July 1 to June 30. But we want this to be implemented really January 1 of this year, so it'll pick up with the second year of our strategic plan, which starts July 1 of next year, and they'll run side by side with one another. So every time we bring the strategic plan to the board for evaluation, talk about outcomes, talk about issues that we're having with certain things perhaps, we'd also talk specifically about the enrollment management plan, where we might need to make tweaks or strategic sort of adjustments. And really, the enrollment management plan aligns most tightly to KD 1 and 2. So, yeah. But so they really should run parallel, but we'll be off like six months with ERP, so...
Yeah, because there's no reason if there are things you can start now.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
There's things already started in this plan. Absolutely. It started months ago, so, yeah. Thanks.
Just want to make sure you weren't taking like a six-month vacation or something, you know?
Well, I mean, if you're offering.
No, I am not.
Absolutely not, you know?
No, sorry. No, we started already a lot of this, so it's exciting stuff, so... Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss a couple of things. In the first, it talks about increasing overall billable credit hours of 55,000 credit hours. Excuse me. I'm looking at the figures from the audit report, where it talks about semester credit hours. Is that, do those two numbers, are they the same numbers?
No, these are yearly. These are yearly credit hour numbers, and it's kind of, that number's based on our projected budget.
You mean, in the audit, it's based on actual numbers?
Yeah, so the 55,000 is based on a full academic year, so...
Well, so, I mean, the numbers from the audit report are also...
Yep, yep.
So, the question is, I mean, the 55,000 seems kind of low, quite low compared to where we were at the end of the fiscal year of June 2021. At that point, we had almost 71,000 semester credit hours.
I don't believe we had 71,000 credit hours. That's not, those must be duplicated credit hours. So you want to jump in? She's got it, yeah.
What we're looking at here are billable credit hours. So any of the high school partnership hours would have to come out, or they would be in the audit report.
So you think the audit report includes high school dual-credit hours?
Yeah, with 71,000, but we're, yeah.
Okay. How did you arrive at a... So year two, when would year two end then? Would be January of 2025, January 1, or how? You're going to try to get in sync with the fiscal year, right?
Yeah, so it's July 1 to June 30 each year. So I think we anticipated about a 2% increase each year, is what I think we... And that was really what we thought was reasonable and manageable, knowing everything else that's going on, programs changing, new platforms, new team members coming on, attrition, retirements. Yeah, so... And maybe that's a bit conservative, but we'd sort of rather exceed expectations than not, so 2% to us seems pretty reasonable.
I would agree that 2% seems pretty timid, not very aggressive. I mean, we're seeing some pretty, in some community colleges, a fairly sizable increase this year. I mean, Lewis and Clark isn't, but a lot of them are, a lot more than 2%.
And I don't have the complete numbers on it, but the 55,000 is actually more of a 2% increase than what we've started with. So that's kind of, 55,000 is actually the more ambitious number. I don't know the exact number we were at last year, but it's more than, that's more than 2%.
Does the 55,000, is that aggressive as compared to what?
The 2%, the years after.
As compared to June 30, 22?
As it compared to 2% the years after that.
And just to clarify, so year two will actually end June 30 of 2025, right? Or 2024?
Yes.
Yeah.
Twenty...
Because our first year was actually, we're six months into the plan. About six months into the plan.
And I was wondering, on the second page, it talks about, under Objective 3, Number 2, it says, "Add two general education instructors each year to develop CBE options." Could you tell me a little bit more about what they would be doing?
Yeah, so that's part of the initiative which we started last year, also kind of an outcome of our new contract with our faculty, is to encourage CBE development. Right now, our IT program is under construction for CBE. We have other programs such as criminal justice, process technology, that are interested in developing a CBE pathway. So this would be linked into the ultimate plan, that we're trying to encourage this work more aggressively across campus. The other part is our general education courses. You know, the goal would be, you know, hopefully by next fall, we have most of those general education courses with a CBE option. And Jen Fuller, who's taken a great initiative in beginning to develop those courses, and several of them are already complete, so...
Wait, you're saying general education will be starting in the fall of...
Gen ed courses will be developed in CBE as well, and many of those are underway and some are completed.
Well, the only, I mean, according to the plan here, the only two that are completed are, actually will be started, but welding is done.
Welding's done.
And then ITEC, we start the fall of 2023.
That's the plan.
And then add two programs each year after.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the general education wouldn't be starting until the fall?
Well, the gen ed, right, and gen ed courses are part of those programs, but sometimes those programs don't require all gen ed, you know what I mean? So we're trying to also develop all of our general education courses as well. So if you're earning a two-year degree, you have your core courses and you have your gen ed courses. So maybe to clarify with you is they're embedded. But we have some specialized CEBE courses in gen ed. Like if you have a special, you know, maybe a course that a student takes outside the scope of their program, maybe it's, you know, I don't know, make up a name of, you know, fiction of the West, you know, and they take that class, but that's offered in a CBE form versus like your English 101, your psych, you know, your sociology, your math, those are all our core, so those are all part of those courses, Kevin, or all part of those programs.
So it sounded like maybe those two general education instructors are already in the system, they've already been hired. We're not talking about additional hiring.
No, no, these are faculty that work for us, that are working as part of this initiative.
So we're just, we're adding them, or we're kind of moving them from one function to another? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay. Next, we'll start the, we'll consider Omnibus Agenda, and unless anyone wants to pull out, are there any items that anybody wants to pull out? If not, we'll approve it all together.
I'd like to consider Item L, as in Larry separately.
I'd like to pull out Item N, as in Nancy.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve Omnibus Agenda excluding Item L and Item N?
Motion.
Sick. Okay, I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion, these items? Okay, call the roll. Barker?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Now, we'll consider Item L. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion of Item L?
I just wanted to clarify something in my mind on that. The $1,500, is that 1,500 per month or for the total six-month period, or...
For the full six months.
For the full time?
Yeah, that's just, this is a...
That's down quite a bit from, I mean, you had 500 per month before, and now it's quite a bit lower than that.
Yeah, 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 because, you know, that was when there were initiatives going on, such as Main Complex, so there was a little bit more travel planned. We anticipate a little bit less travel this time around. Most of that will be to Springfield for the new legislative session, so I feel those expenses will be a little bit lower.
Could you remind me why we're doing this? I mean, we get your expense reports every month, of course.
Yeah, because when I first started, every time I wanted to leave the district, I had to ask permission, and sometimes I wouldn't hear back from the chairman.
Permission from the board president?
Right, and it's just counterproductive. I mean, there have been times in the last month where I've gone to Springfield or I've gone to Witchfield for meetings pertaining to college business, and it's just nice to be able to have that ability to do that without asking permission every time.
Any other discussion? Okay, call the roll. Barker?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
McCain? Johnson?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now, we'll consider Item N, Gifts to Receive. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I just wanted to make a statement that we donated a forklift to the college, and we needed, this thing weighs about 10, 12,000 pounds, and we needed to get it out here. And Tricky Service in Woodriver hauled it out here for me, and when he found out it was a donation, he says, "That's my donation to the college." So I wanted to be everybody aware of that Tricky Service in Woodriver donated the hauling of that big piece of equipment out here. So hopefully, somebody will send him a thank you card or something.
Absolutely, thank you.
But I thought it was awful, and when he found out it was a donate, he says, "Then I'm donating it to you," so that's all I wanted to...
Yeah, maybe, you know, we add that to the official record, or, you know?
Actually, got a gifts document from Sue, I'm going to take to him tomorrow, and have him fill out for his services as a donation, but I think we need to acknowledge him.
Yes, I agree.
He didn't have to do that. He just did it.
Right. Okay, so let's have a vote. Barker?
Yes.
McCain? Russ?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Move on to action items. The first item is Item A, New Campus Policy: Establishment and Administration of Endowed Chair. Dr. Traska, would you like to give a little bit of background on this?
Yeah, absolutely. So over probably the last six months or so, we've had two donors approach the institution, and so we've been working with those individuals respectively, and each are interested in establishing an endowment for the college. You know, the parameters of these endowments are still under construction, but in one particular case, the endowment wouldn't kick in until, you know, the donors, you know, passed on, and so... And then the second one, you know, would probably take four to five years before the corpus is established, you know, at a seven-figure level, which then would yield, you know, a return that could, in effect, fund a particular program. Part of the idea was that creating an endowed chair policy would allow us to frame gifts to potential donors, both the current prospective donors, but future donors who have an interest in supporting our programs and ultimately helping us support faculty salaries, faculty travel, professional development, student scholarships. So this policy is really just an opportunity for us to create stronger alignment with our foundation board, and also to present an option for our current donors, prospective donors, moving forward. So, yeah. So any questions on, or I guess we'll wait till the motion, but happy to answer any questions as well.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, I have a question. I'd like to talk about the one section, F1. Now, it says that the disestablishment of an endowed chair is Item I. Subject to the donor's approval and with the concurrence of the foundation, the college president is authorized to disestablish an endowed chair in the event that, and then it goes on, talks about circumstances. I'm concerned that that's limiting, that's limiting your ability, the president's ability to make decisions regarding what subject to be presented.
Yeah, I would, and I would say the response to that question would be, I think, with any donor, and actually having done this in the past, it's the relationship with that donor, the relationship between the college and that foundation board, that if a donor or if something happened with a particular program that, say, I created, you know, made a donation, created an endowment to support, you know, automotive technology, and the president said, "Listen, we're making some changes in automotive technology, would you be open to perhaps pivoting, you know, maybe your annual gift to another cause on campus?" You know, I think, Kevin, I mean, I get what you're saying, but I also think, you know, the relationships we have with our donors is really what it comes down to, and I also think it has to do with the relationship with the foundation, that we're having discussions around any of these endowed funds that are set up, how those dollars are being used, how we might shift. We just keep those donors in sort of tuned into what we're doing, if that clarifies. So, I mean, I did see that feedback from you, and I just felt, and I think that comes down to the relationship with the donors, and I don't feel that, as president of the college, I would have any less leverage or ability to work collaboratively with the donor, the foundation board, executive director, director of development, to do what's right for our students, the institution, et cetera, so...
Dr. Traska, we have a family scholarship here, and we have covenants when we made that scholarship, and this year, there was a situation come up where a student needs some help, and they contacted me, and we made the modification.
So that, yeah.
No big deal. Happens all the time.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think, too, if you don't have something in there, you know, where the three parties work together, I think it might discourage a donor from wanting to do that if they have no say over what happens to, so maybe between the three, the balance between the three groups is probably a good idea. I don't think you just want the president to just be able to decide. As a donor, I don't think I would, to give my money, and then you decide later to use it for something else without my consent, so that's the way I saw it.
So wouldn't that be a situation where the donor established a particular or supported a particular subject, and really, it could never be changed? I mean, if the donor decided, "No, I want you to keep on teaching such and such," I want you to have to keep on doing that subject, handling that subject, offering that subject? I mean, why would we want to, I mean, it's great, I mean, it's wonderful that we're getting these donations, I mean, don't get me wrong on that, I mean, it's fantastic, but I think it's a, I mean, that seems like a bit of a technicality, but, and it can be rewarded so that we're still working with the donor, we're working with the foundation. It's not like we're just going to be arbitrarily violating the donor's wishes. We'd only be doing it if we truly needed to change the subject matter.
Well, I think in that case, if you have a program, or let's say, an endowment supporting a program or a particular course, or a faculty member who's teaching a certain course, and maybe there aren't enrollments in that course, I think it's going to end up being a discussion with that donor to say, "Could we support other parts of that program or other programs that might be very closely associated with that program," or perhaps, you know, create more of an unrestricted gift that supports a broader population of students. I mean, I see what you're saying, but I always think that there's negotiation capacity in those sorts of situations.
In our donor agreements, excuse me, and Dwight, you could probably speak to this, our donor agreements are drafted with that language that says, you know, although this is the intended purpose, should that program or that particular scholarship no longer you know, although this is the intended purpose, should that program or that particular scholarship no longer exist, that it could be either applied to a, a, a similar career field if it's a scholarship or there's language that indicates that the foundation will contact the donor to find out whether or not that they want to redirect that gift or cease that gift, so.
I think that's very good that that's the way you're drafting, the don, the agreements being drafted. So why would we want to have a policy that is, that conflicts with the way we're actually doing it? I don't think the policy conflicts.
I think it just reiterates that that's the practice that would be expected in that incidence.
This policy, the policy does not reiterate what you said, Lori. It actually contradicts it. It says that it's subject to the donor's agreement and the concurrence of the foundation.
Well, even in the, I mean, even in the language, that still has to be discussed, sort of like Dwight's point. I mean, we're not just gonna make the change.
According to this language, it doesn't have to be discussed. It's subject to the donor's approval.
I think the expectation is if you, if you want donations, you have to have an open relationship with the donor, so, or the family of that, of that, of that donation.
Would you even ask a comment?
Yeah, if I could point out, I think the language here has a much more narrow interpretation than what the board is discussing. This is talking specifically about F1 is the authority to disestablish an endowed chair. We're not talking about other types of donations here. So the, the language is specific to an endowed chair, not a donation to a, a specific, a more general purpose than that.
Right, so if, if we, if a program went away where we endowed that faculty member to be an endowed chair, a tenured faculty member, then we can move away from that and talk to that donor specifically. And, and it would still relate to the same thing. Or, or we move away from it being an endowed chair. Maybe it's a broader scope of support for that program, so.
Can I ask a question to possibly clarify this?
Sure.
Would in fact the college have to fill a vacant endowed chair simply because it's been funded?
Not necessarily, no. Any other questions?
Any other discussion? Let's call for the vote. Barker?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
No.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent, uh, Griffin?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. We'll move on to item B, resolution 23-4, review of closed session minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Call for the vote. Barker?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Item 4C, resolution 23-5, 2022 tax levy. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mary's available if there are any questions, so.
At some, at, at, there, there was a memo, we, we got an email that, I mean, these tax levies are pretty hard to understand and, and, and follow in that. But it indicated that our tax levy this year is lower than our tax levy last year. I just compared the resolution that we did pass last year with the resolution that we're looking at right now. And for example, in the case of the education fund, last year's levy was 7,347. This year's tax levy is 7,941. So that's an 8% increase. It's the same 8% increase for operations and maintenance and also for the special for health and safety. Could you clarify that?
Yeah, we will. Go ahead, Mary.
The resolution that is in the board book is at the 10% expected EAV increase, which we know we will not receive. So unless we come close to 10%, the total levy will be less and the rate goes down.
Well, I guess, why is it so much higher than last year's resolution?
The resolution isn't higher than last year's significantly. What we have presented...
I was looking at the wrong resolution. I was looking at the resolution that we passed in the December 2021 meeting.
Okay, that would be the resolution based on an estimated or a topside EAV increase. What this resolution is compared to is actual levy numbers as a result of the application of the 2021 EAV. When we levy with the counties, we're levying typically at a level that we do not expect to receive. Otherwise, we, if we would levy at a 3% and EAV goes up 4.5%, then we have 1.5% we will not receive. So we're levying at the max that we will get.
Didn't we levy at the max last year?
Essentially, yes. What we did last year and what we've done prior years because we had the additional tax is we made sure we did not fall in the truth in taxation. So we stayed below the 1, 105%. So last year's plan, I believe, might have been 8%?
I think it was eight. And, and last year, we did take the additional tax as well. So when Mary and I discussed this, we realized, we didn't, we didn't realize, we, as through discussion with the board, we didn't take the additional tax because of, you know, our financial stability. So that's why we have it at the 10% this year, so.
Right. I didn't, because of 10% being highly unlikely as it is, I didn't see any point of putting an astronomical EAV increase out there just to drive us closer to 105%.
When they actually calculate what we will get, is it based on a rate or is it based on this dollar amount?
Both. There are certain aspects of the levy that are rate-based and there are certain aspects of the levy that are dollar-based. So let's for instance say the audit. We specify a specific dollar amount in the audit. So that is the amount, give or take, a little, of what we will receive for the audit and that is, is allocated across taxpayers.
It's an even amount. That's why it's an even amount.
Right. So then when you look at something like the ed, education fund, it's 15.15. So that is rate-based. So there's, there's two things at play.
So let me ask a question this way. So even though, even though the tax levy, even though the tax levy is quite a, you know, way higher than last year's resolution, our taxpayers are not gonna see an increase in their tax bill. Is that, is that what you're saying?
The highest, it should be...
More or less. I mean, I, no, no.
Right, is the small amount. It's less than 1% that I outlined in the, the email that I had sent. The total levy at its highest would be .7180%. Now, that doesn't take into play if there are prior year adjustments by the counties. You know, they assess those and there is a, a small percentage for, it's a collection percentage. And I'm not coming up with the name for, that they, different counties will assess as well.
When's the EAV established?
Usually in late spring.
So their bill could go up if the EAV goes up.
If the EAV goes down, the rates will go up.
Right.
The higher the EAV goes, the lower the rate will go.
Say that again, the, the higher the...
The higher the EAV, the lower the tax rate.
Right.
The rate, not the, not...
I think his question was about the tax amount, right? The tax, the tax bill, the dollar amount.
That's what our taxpayers worry about is the tax amount. They don't care about the rate.
The EAV went up. The dollar amount.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It depends on how much it goes up too because, and I lined this out, but at the different amounts, the fixed may be higher, the fixed portion may be higher and the rate portion may be higher.
And these are, these are the, the figures that will be reflected in the tax, uh, tax bill that our people get in this coming year, right? In Ju, July? These are, these figures right here, you know, this resolution is, will determine the tax bill that our people...
This resolution will determine the tax bill. This is not necessarily what the tax bill will reflect.
No, I mean, I'm not, I'm not talking about, you know, exact numbers or anything. I'm just, I'm just talking about the timing.
This will drive that tax bill depending on the EAV results.
But I believe your tax bill is always a year behind, right?
Right, the 22 levy will be what we're, will be paid.
The bill I'm gonna pay on my proper taxes this, in July, is last year's bill. You're always a year, a year in the rears.
This 22 levy will be what's paid next summer.
Right, so the taxes we pay in 2023 will be based on 2022 values.
Correct. The 20, right, and to complicate it further, the 22 levy will be 50% in fiscal year '23 and 50% in fiscal year '24.
And here at Lewis and Clark, right, we'll spoil that.
Right, and that's a gaspee, so it's split.
Clear as mud.
It's fun.
I'm sorry you gotta go through our slow brains and explain all that. We hear it once a year, you know, so. Okay. I guess we're ready for a vote. We haven't voted, right?
Just talked about it.
Barker?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. We'll move on to item 4D, resolution 23-6, abatement series 2015B. Can you just give a quick explanation of what this is?
I will. The 2015B bonds for which this abatement addresses were issued in May of 2015 and they were issued at that time to refund a portion of the 2004B general obligation bonds, which were sold for capital projects, and the 2005B general obligation bonds, which funded a part of our nursing building. So the bonds were issued at the amount that's at the top of the resolution, the $3,990,000. And this will actually be the last time this abatement will appear for the tax levy. We will be making the last payment on November 1st of 2023 in the amount of $76,125.
Okay, before we have a discussion, I want to, do we have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions? So you said this debt will be paid off next November?
This issue, yes.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Barker?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hanfelder? Griffin?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. And now we'll consider item 4E, 2023, 20, 2223 college holiday calendar will be revised to include all five days of the spring recess in the annual holiday calendar, so all campuses will be closed the entire week. Do I have a motion?
I'm withdrawing my support of this motion. I understand that the leadership team is not in favor of it. And so I'm withdrawing it for that reason. And I think that, I hope that the leadership team will consider this in the future. I know that it's been a goal, a general goal of trying to maintain some parity between our faculty and our, and our non-faculty employees. And this would be as a, as a movement in that direction to try to, to have that parity. I'd certainly like to, just as Dr. Traska said, when he, when we passed the, the one day additional last month, I'd like to make, provide even more work-life balance for our employees, more than just one day. And I know that Dr. Traska said, Traska said that other colleges are, are able, some, some of them are able to shut down completely that whole week, that whole spring week. So I think if we plan for it, we should be able to do that eventually.
Is there a motion? Okay, and we'll move on to the next item. Okay. Informational items. Dr. Traska, would you like to, to...
I just, I, I would kinda do my sort of normal comments here. Are there any particular questions on A through E? I know on E, we do like to, I don't know, Lori, you wanna come up and talk through E on our recognition report, something that we initiated a couple of months ago? Unless there's other questions on A through D, but hopefully the information provided is helpful. Can we talk about E?
Yeah, we had just a few individuals who were highlighted on the recognition report on page 125 that we wanted to mention. Robert Kircher, who is our web content specialist, as you can imagine, he's in the throes of redesigning our new website right now and working very diligently with Laura Inlow and her team to get that ready. But someone just wanted to recognize him for his quick response time and turnaround and, and making some, some badly needed changes to a website that helped relieve someone's stress. We also want to acknowledge Tim Hellrung in our maintenance department. He is our automotive technician. And as you can see listed there, there were 15 vehicle services or repairs that were done. A lot of those were in support of making sure our vehicles are ready for the winter weather here on campus. So we want to give Tim some credit for the hard work he's done over the last few months to get all of those vehicles up and running. And then Mike Edwards and Sam Stoner. We had an incident on the, at the Nelson campus, a few, I guess it's been about a month ago, where we had some keys go missing. And rather than have secure, pay security, and Brad was very appreciative of this as well because we don't have security over there 24/7. So Mike Edwards and Sam Stoner worked until just past midnight, re-coring all of the outer door keys there until we were able to relocate those keys and get those back into our safe possession. So they did that and we made sure they took the next day off because that was a long process. But I know Brad was very grateful and his staff was as well. And I just want to give a special shout out while I have the microphone to Laura Inlow and the PR and marketing team for yesterday's brand launch. And I thank those of you who were able to attend. We're just really excited to get it out. As you can see, we, we tried to cover up the old logo that's on the wall there tonight. But they are, I'm sure Laura's online right now, but they've been working to update the website and all of the collateral things, all of our social media pages, and we're just really excited to get that new logo out there. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Okay, we can move on to the leadership team reports.
Yeah, so Dr. Brown, our director of athletics, will come on up and present a, kind of an overview of the last two or three months in athletics. So come on up, Dr. Brown. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, welcome, Ms. Griffin. And we are so glad to have you with us. Chuck Hanfelder, I haven't seen you since I dawned the campus and welcome back. And I'm glad you're feeling better. The 2223 school year shaped up to be everything I'd imagined it, it would be. In the five short months of the fall semester, the Trailblazer Athletics, we have worked together very collaboratively with different members of our campus to build relationships to provide better overall experiences for our student athletes. And here are some of the highlights of that. Our foundation board of directors, I want to give a special thanks to Dr. Dale Chapman, Debbie Ellman, Shontaya Wagner, Dr. Ken Traska for their perpetual support of athletics, one in a fueling station...
one in a fueling station, and that fueling station helps us to kind of mitigate some of the food issues that we have with our student athletes. And they helped us with a twelve-foot LED scorer's table that will help us to also generate revenue for our athletics department so that we can do more things for our student athletes. Enrollment, advising, and student, student success. We increased communication with our faculty because of collaborative partnerships with Debbie Whitson and our faculty team members to help revise the department's academic success tool. It was a progress report, but in that, with the faculty's feedback, we changed that tool to add a reflective piece by the student athlete, and then what that did was it created conversations between the faculty member and the student athlete for the betterment of the student athlete. The add drop policies that we had initially decreased substantially since two thousand nineteen, according to Mrs. Samantha Ersh, our athletic advisor. That is significant for us because it means that our student athletes are doing well in their coursework, they're being retained in the coursework that they're participating in. And that is due to the work of Tim Bell, our interim vice president of student affairs, Kate Kessler, our assistant director of academic advising, and the aforementioned Samantha Ersh, our athletic academic advisor. Their dedication and support of our athletics program has made it better and sustainable for our student athletes. One of the big things that I'm very proud of is that our coaching staff helped me to create the Student Athlete Advisory Council. And I have some members of that council here that I would like to introduce you to. First of all, our, this, this is a part of our executive team for our Student Athlete Advisory Council. First of all, Madeline, or Maddie Streaker, our president, Boston Tally, our vice president, Brooke Wolf, our treasurer, and then we also have Ethan Worley, who was our media and events director, Lisa, who was our secretary, and then Lauren Kirkby, who was our community service and engagement director. Each one of these student athletes are exceptional in their leadership, they're exceptional in the classroom, they, they give a voice to the student athletes that seem to think that they don't have a voice sometimes. And we meet every other Friday, great food, right? We meet every other Friday and we, I turn it over to Maddie, the agenda, it's her agenda, and they run that, that meeting, kind of like you all run your meeting here, and I just kind of sit back and, and try to advise them. We're going to do some fundraising. Go ahead and say. Again, there's a six-member executive leadership team, a twenty-member council of student leaders, and it's two individuals from each of our ten teams, very diverse in the different ethnicities that we have, obviously representing in both genders. And then they're doing things such as the President's Cup, which is a five-tenant initiative that they already completed one, which was the Trailblazer Talent Show. We had a great time, a lot of fun, opened it up to the community and they did a wonderful job. Team overall GPA, Spirit Award, instead, instead of sportsmanship, right? Because we want to be diverse, equitable, and inclusive, so we changed that to Spirit Award, and what that is, seventy-five percent of each team has to go and, and watch and participate at another team's event. And then community service hours, and then fundraising efforts. So they are doing a wonderful job as of right now, and then we're going to implement a different type of student leadership initiative in the spring. Department of fundraising, we are in, in excess of thirty thousand dollars since August the first in fundraising efforts, closer to forty thousand dollars. And that is akin to the job that the student athletes do, the support of the foundation, Dr. Traska, and we did, we partnered with Vertical Raise. I believe the board approved our partnership with them earlier in the fall, and through that partnership, we were able to do a annual give of ten thousand, ten thousand five hundred dollars with Vertical Raise, with a bigger annual give for next year. The three initiatives or three events that we hope to do for our student athletes as main fundraisers, trivia night with Silent Auction, which is on March twenty-third from six to ten in our commons, the Athletic Hall of Fame, which is April eighteenth. We haven't had one since two thousand and fifteen, and we're going to bring that back, and we have candidates for that. And then the, the one that's most important is the All Sports Banquet, which we don't have a date for that because the initial date that we had, our men's baseball team and our women's softball team will be competing that day, so we want to make sure. And then in the twenty-two, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, working with Ms. Debbie Edelman and the foundation and Dr. Traska, we are looking to do a substantial annual campaign so that we can begin the Athletic Endowment Fund for athletics. And Dr. Traska is working with me and giving me education, him and Ms. Debbie Edelman, on how those things will work for us. And then later down the road, you will get an athletics dashboard that Dr. Traska and I are working on so that you can get an in-depth look into the athletic department, its financials, current and future staff needs, and the goals moving forward. And then last but not least, Dr. Traska was at an ICCTA meeting and they brought up policies for student athlete endorsements. In two thousand and twenty-one, the NCAA gave way to student athletes being able to be paid for their name, image, and likeness. In the early part of the fall semester, this fall semester, we invited opendors.com, a large NIL firm, to come and speak to our student athletes. And during that time, they were able to enroll about forty percent of our student athletes. And then as I continue to fundraise, Dr. Traska and I will complete that partnership with them, and that partnership will allow Open Doors to come in and speak directly to our student athletes about different ways to use their name, image, and likeness, different ways to seek out individuals or companies that want to use student athletes to promote their, their process. And I think that it's an absolutely ideal way for our student athletes to secure some finances for themselves and, and be able to use their name, image, and likeness for a positive, in a positive way. And right now, I'm working with team members, or will be working with team members, to implement or give an addendum to our student athlete code of conduct, because we don't absolutely have to have a policy. The state policy is in line with the NCAA policy, and, you know, we'll probably, we have four-year schools, Illinois, DePaul, Illinois State, that have similar policies, and we'll probably look at that with our legal team to make sure that we are in compliance with what we're doing for our student athletes. And that is my report. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you for that. I got a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know how many student athletes we have?
A hundred and fifty-two.
Maybe you said that, I'm sorry if you did.
I did not.
And then, do you have to be a full-time student to be an athlete? Are those a hundred and fifty-two all full-time students?
In order to compete at this level, you have to be a full-time student at twelve credit hours or more at any given time. And then for every full-time semester, that you are enrolled, you are responsible for those hours moving forward. So case in point, Ms. Julie, you are enrolled full-time in the first semester, you're enrolled in full-time the, the second semester, your third term, you're going to be responsible for twenty-four credit hours at a minimum of a two-point-oh GPA.
Okay. And then what does NIL stand for?
Name, Image, and Likeness.
Okay. You said an NIL firm, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am, Open Doors, O-P-E-N-D-O-R-S-E, opendors.com.
That's the name of the NIL firm.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I, I know it's really, you know, way early for this, but do you think any of our athletes will actually be promoting any local products or services?
We have student athletes that have had NIL endorsements thus far. Ethan Worley, our media and events coordinator, he, he has, he was part of Open Doors, like student athlete of the month back in October, because he is, his IG and media presence is pretty high.
An IG is Instagram.
Julie, with your questions about competing endorsements, are you thinking about?
Do you have any eligibility left, Ms. Julie?
I'm pretty good at volleyball, you know, I'm.
Any other questions? Thank you much for your time and, and thank you for your continued support of our student athletes, and my only ask of the board is come and buy a table at the trivia night in Silent Auction. It's eight people, it's four hundred dollars.
And what's the date?
April, excuse me, March twenty-third, March twenty-third, Silent Auction, Mulligans, all the above. We're going to have fun. It's going to be a family-filled event, and the proceeds obviously are going to go to our student athletes.
Ms. Jill, did you have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Great job, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Traska?
So, yeah, so just a couple of things. First and foremost, what everyone's been anticipating, we finally initiated our engagement with Hastings and Chivetta. They were on campus last Friday. Joel was part of that, Dwight was part of that, about twenty-five or thirty team members across campus. Later this week, the board will get a copy of that PowerPoint presentation that Hastings and Chivetta walked us through, as well as the anticipated dates that they will begin their engagement with our full campus team. We also talked a little bit about board engagement and, you know, one of the thoughts that I put out there was at least every other month, they would be at our board meeting to provide the board with a comprehensive update of the progress of that project, and of course entertain any questions that you all have. They're anticipating, I think, about twelve to sixteen weeks until we actually see kind of the scope of work, drawings, and so we're really excited about that. And again, just express thank you to the board and everyone who's supported that project. A couple of other things, so we had our all-team meeting today, kind of our last all-team meeting, and I asked the leadership team to share one thing that they were most proud of in terms of accomplishments this year, and then one thing that they're looking forward to. And I can tell you, in terms of kind of the theme across that board, in terms of what the team was most proud about, is that, you know, we got through the semester, in effect, without a cyber incident, without really any more COVID. We've seen the development of our enrollment management plan, our strategic plan started implementation, we're starting to see outcomes of that. One of the, one of the great outcomes around KD three is, of course, our hiking through the holidays, which I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, has seen over a thousand unique visitors just since it started. I know I've seen two hundred this night, two hundred that night. It's unbelievable, and just want to thank that team. The other piece is, you know, in terms of what we're looking forward to, we have a really packed spring semester, and the board, you saw today, sorry, but there is a board engagement calendar that I've been putting together, and it kind of outlined all of the exciting things that are happening in the spring. We have our HLC visit, we have a board election, we also have several retreats. As we begin to navigate our budget process for next year, we're going to approach that a little bit differently, looking at ways that we can invest even more into our campus team and into some of the programming that we're putting together. So stay tuned to all of that good stuff that's coming along. I, I do kind of, before I wrap this up, is I do want to thank Tim. I know Tim gave a little bit of an update, answered some questions, for serving as our interim VPSA, did an awesome job. He'll be going back to the N.O. Nelson campus, starting in the early part of the new year. So thank you, Tim, and congratulations again to Dr. Jackson for her promotion to VPSA. Also want to, and I know she's not here, but Tammy Childers, who is a division assistant in our math and science department for thirty years, is retiring, and tomorrow from one to three, if you're interested, we're having a bit of a retirement party for her. I hope that was not a secret. But anyway, we're having a retirement party for her tomorrow. And just, you know, Tammy, I think, you know, like, like others who've come before her are just the representation of what we're all about, being able to have great team members who want to spend their career here and are committed to this work. So just a lot of gratitude goes out to Tammy and all of our team members who every day show up and go beyond expectations. So that really concludes the essence of my update, but I would go remiss if I didn't thank the board for a great semester. You know, I think as we move forward with this work, it's never going to be easy, there's always going to be complications, but I think the bottom line is, is your support is noticed by our team, it's noticed by our community, and we really appreciate that. You can anticipate later this week, an article coming out reflecting on really the good standing that the college is in from a financial perspective and some of the accomplishments that we've made this last three or four months, this semester. And again, just thank you and of course thank the team just for being a great team and doing great work each and every day, and of course for our students who are investing in us and trusting in us as leaders to help them along in their journey. So thank you all very much, Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy Holidays, and we hope you all are safe and really get a chance to take a step back and relax for the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned? Thank you.
Thank you. I would have dropped the mic, but I can't drop this mic.